My name is Holly Trojak and I've lived in Port Mansfield since 2017. Moved here with my husband Mike. When I retired from UPS, I worked for UPS for over thirty years in the transportation industry. I've traveled all over the world, all over the United States, and traveled extensively with our cargo operations, with our small package operations. And I've got a lot of experience in operations and logistics and a lot of experience managing Teamsters. So, yeah, our Teamsters in here. We're just gonna go with the policy book on that. But I moved to Port Mansfield, we bought a house here in Port Mansfield in 2014, and Mike and I, we used to fish in Port O'Connor. And, you know, we've got four children between us, we've got eight grandchildren, all grandsons, they all love to fish, they all love to come to Port Mansfield. We love Port Mansfield, and that's why we moved here. We're here for our retirement, to enjoy the community, and just, we've made a lot of really, really good friends here. And I appreciate this community, I appreciate the environment, I appreciate what it stands for, for the heritage that has been inducted here, for all the businesses that have been built here, like the lineout rentals, I used to work for Civil for a little bit, we've got the K Winklers over here, we've got the Barts Bayware, we've got a lot of people that have come here and, you know, started their own fishing enterprise, their own fishing business. And most of the things that we do in this coastal community revolve around fishing and revolve around the natural ecosystem that we all enjoy here in Port Mansfield. And that's why Mike and I came here, because we were catching these dingy little fish in the freshwater, and then we came here, we caught these big old trout, these big red fish, you know, we've gone offshore, snapper fishing, I think he's caught some mahi mahi. But we just really love Port Mansfield, and we want to do what's right for Port Mansfield. I want to do what's right for Port Mansfield, I want to do what's right for the community, for the people. And, you know, I never lived in a navigation district before, so it's my first. All right, so a lot of you old timers, y'all understand the process, y'all know how it goes, and y'all have seen it, you know, come and go, you've seen the good times and the bad times. And I'm pretty sure you've seen a lot of things that don't necessarily go in a normal community. So where I lived in Rome, I mean, it was just a small municipality, small area there, and, you know, I never really noticed much about what goes on with the local politics. But when I moved here to Port Mansfield, when they shut the boat ramps down and we couldn't go fishing, I was irritated because I don't have a place on the water, I'm off water, so we couldn't even put our boat in. So that's one of the things I disagreed with, and that, you know, I understand we were in COVID and all that, but it was one of the few enjoyments that we could have had as this community, is to be able to go out and fish. And then when we would go to the meetings, you know, and just try to talk to the people there, I think the first meeting I went to, we were told that this is not their, not our area, and we need to get out. And, I mean, I was just shocked by the way that they treated us, and I did not really think that that was the way that a normal citizen should be treated, even just at a meeting. I didn't know that they carried so much power and so much authority over just our daily lives. So that's why I want to become a municipality, that's why I want to form a municipality, so that we can have some control over what's been going on in our community. The overindustrialization, I mean, we were here first, I feel like we were here first, and then they've come in there and just plopped this, whatever it is, some people say it's not a container barge port, some people say it is, doesn't really matter, it's a big industrial project that they've plopped in the middle of our harbor, in the middle of our community, and have disrupted pretty much our way of life. And they never asked anybody here, they never asked me, they never asked you, they never asked the people in Ramonville, they never asked the people in La Sara, they never asked any of us if that's something that we wanted. You know, they just set out a survey or something, they had some special people come in and do a special, you know, charter or whatever, and make all these plans for us, and we're not even included in those plans. So I want to be included in the plans that this community has for Port Mansfield, and I want to be a part of that, and I want you, the people of Port Mansfield, to be a part of that as well. So that's what I'm running for mayor, and that's what I'm asking y'all to join me.
Good afternoon. I'm not very good at using these, so I found out to mess it up. First of all, I want to start out by saying that I appreciate you taking some time out this afternoon to spend with us, so that you can get better informed on what we're actually going to the polls for on the Fourth of November. I don't know a whole lot of you guys, but I do know some of you, and especially the guys in the back of the room, thanks for joining us today, I'm glad you're here, because we're all part of one community, right? And that's Port Mansfield, and we're trying to make it the best that we can make. I don't want to tear it up, I don't want to change it, I don't want to make it big, and I don't want to make it a south padre, nor, I mean, that's not what we're up here to do. So, I mean, you hear all this stuff, and anyway. My name is Alan Price, and I'm from Alabama. We moved here in 2019, 2019, I pulled an RV over here at R&amp;R, and we hung out and decided we liked it after I retired from twenty-some-odd years in the military. I'm a retired military officer, I graduated from Auburn University, we used to have a football team, we no longer have a football team. We have a basketball team that shows up occasionally. But we just spent a lot of time down here, and we was in the RV one day, and my wife looked over at me, and she says, "What are we doing? We got this big old house in north San Antonio, and we don't want to ever go there." And I said, "What are you talking about?" She said, "Let's sell it and move down here." And I was like, "Whoa, throw me in that fire, Pat." So, so, man, we really like Port Mansfield, I think everybody shares that, we're not here to make the community worse in any shape, form, or fashion. If I thought for one second that me running for a council member or whatever it is would jeopardize the good or well-being of Port Mansfield, then I wouldn't be here. My reason for running is pretty simple. Every other township in the United States runs off of a municipality, just, I mean, do the math. There's not a whole lot of navigation districts running down. We need the navigation district, not talking about them going away, but they need to focus on that channel out there and that harbor, clean it up, and make it what it's supposed to be. And the township probably ought to be run by the same thing that every other township is run by in the United States, and works, believe it or not. And I'm sure we can figure that out. We're a little bit slower down here, but I think we got some people smart enough to figure out how the municipality works and stand it up, then they're gonna be like walking down a room and clicking on a switch, it's gonna take it some time. It's gonna be a slow, deliberate process, and we want to do it right. And we got to have buy-in from the community before we can get started. So that's why we're here today, is to buy in, get buy-in from you guys. We want y'all to vote yes, we want y'all to vote for us, but if you don't, go vote anyway. So we need you to vote, and we want you to vote for us. That's all I got, it's plain and simple. We got the wrong government trying to run the town, it's already going too big. We have, what, twelve, fifteen houses in the last three years? So the growth is here, it's happening. Navigation District, done it. Fantastic job setting this thing up. We got roads, we got sewer, we got water, we got everything. But it's seventy-some-odd years old, and maybe beginning to show a little bit of age, like the rest of them. And then we're gonna have to work on it. So glad you're here, I hope we have a good, open discussion, and I'll turn it over to Gary, because he's got a long speech. It's only about three pages, he goes through it, and I bow him out.
Yeah. I'll see it, can y'all hear me okay? I can use it. Yes, no, maybe. Way in the back, can you hear me? Need the mic? I'm trying, it's gonna be hard to do, because I gotta use my left hand and my right hand at the same time, so, see how that works.
Gary's got some visuals for you.
Yeah, I got some visuals for you. I'm gonna show a couple of videos that y'all probably already seen, but hang with me, okay? I'm just trying to make a point here. But for me and my wife Denise, we've been here for about five years. Now Denise has actually been coming down here since she was around about five or six years old, with her dad. Her dad came down here, he was a salesman for senior sewing machines, went into Mexico and did all the fun stuff, and then came over here and sold senior sewing machines. And then I met Denise, I guess, years later, when I was eighteen or nineteen years old, and she goes, "You like to fish, right?" I go, "Yes, well, let's go in Port Mansfield." So I came down here, and I've been coming, and we've been coming ever since. And so for retirement, we said, "Hey, we'd love to move down here." So about five years ago, we moved down here. And I loved it, I loved the fishing, I loved the hunting, and I've been able to kind of just pretty much totally retire within the last year, so I traveled a lot, and I finally got to kind of hang around and stay around, and this summer, I finally got to go out and go fishing whenever I wanted to, and the water was, you know, flat enough for me to go out on shore. I'm one of those guys, you know, years ago when I was young, I could do the two to four feet. Now, I'm sixty-seven, I do two to four inches, that's about it, you know, out here on it. So I wait for those two to four inch days, out there. But I love it here, but there are some things that, you know, kind of bother me a little bit, and I think that a municipality can help solve those things, and talking to other people, and seeing people's posts, I really don't get on Facebook for those things that much, I look every once in a while. But, you know, I want to address a little bit of that here, and one of the things that, or a couple of the things that I've really heard a lot of complaints about, and they're my complaints too, which I think there's ways that we need to look at and try to fix them. One is the sewer. I've seen sewage leakage all over town, and I see it in my bathroom, I smell it in my bathroom, I smell it in my shower, and I don't like it, okay? And the water system, it's old, as Alan said, it's seventy-year-old pipes. Now, one good thing about that, that I just saw today and that I've been watching, is that there is a bill up for vote, I think it's Proposition Four, that the state is going to allow for more money for redoing the pipelines for water in the state of Texas. So if we can get some of that money, that's great. So that's another thing that should be voting on, is Proposition Four, where there's seventeen propositions to vote on, but hopefully we can get that water or some new pipes put in, and that could help out the town quite a bit on it. But there's also drainage problems that's out there that we have to deal with. When it rains, my ditch fills up, and it pours over into my yard, and it pours over into Jeff's yard and underneath his house, and it just doesn't rain, it doesn't, well, it rains pretty good, but it just doesn't drain very well on it. So there are some of the issues that, you know, I think that we need to address, and I've been to the meetings at the Willacy County Navigation District. And from my point of view, I sit there and listen, and I try to have, you know, use my ears and not my mouth so much, I've never spoke up in them, I've actually just sat there and listened, I'll say that. And, but what I do notice from it is I don't see a lot of attentive points or attentiveness from them directly to whoever's speaking. And I see a lot of them on their phones, doing whatever they're doing on their phones, looking somewhere else, or doing something else. So I, you know, from my point of view, I don't think they care a whole lot about what we got to say on it, because it's come across. I'm gonna go through a few slides here and see if this will work, work okay, see if it. I'm gonna have to. Yeah. Let me try this.
I approve the initiative. We need to start this.
Get to the right one, sorry, had it for a minute. I'm making a point here, here's Ryan Mills. If you didn't hear it, he just simply said, "The Navigation District, the members of the Navigation District, Eric's representing for the people of Port Mansfield." Okay, and I'm not throwing Ryan Mills under the bus, okay? He's right, they're not, they're not there to represent us, not at all. On it. A couple more slides.
I approve the initiative this morning, and we're all together. We need to start doing things that people of Mansfield want done. We need to start doing things. We need to fix, we need to fix, I disagree with that.
Not there, it's not my words, that's their words. On it. Eric tried, okay? He went to bat. There's three other people there, four other people there that said, "No, ain't happening, Eric, it's not our job." On it.
I approve.
Sorry.
The initiative.
Listen really quick.
It's supposed to be a port. Now, what is a port? I need to just give you what a port is, and it's not a fishing community, that's not what a port means.
Not a portion, no fishing here, got it? Understand, this community's not for fishing, okay? That's fine. But I'm making a point, I'm not throwing any of them under the bus. Stacy's got her constituents, Trevino's got his constituents, Lefty's got their constituents, they're there for their constituents, but who's here for us? That's the point, okay? They said it right there, it's not their concern. On it. So whose concern is it? Tell me, I'm asking a question, whose concern is it?
Residents of Port Mansfield.
Okay, and the way we're gonna get, the way we're going to be able to do something is with a municipality, because whatever groups that goes in there, it's not doing any good so far. On it. And so my point is, if we want to fix these little things, maybe we can get there with a municipality, okay? At least, at least we can try, okay? At least we can try, we can take a shot. I'm not gonna lay down and play that, so I'm gonna take a shot, I'm gonna go as best I can, I'm retired, I'll give it all my time, I'm here to help however I can, okay? Not doing this for my health, okay? Going through this, right here. I'm going to my daughter and granddaughter's birthday today for this.
You're doing it for the money?
Huh? I'm doing it for all that money I'm gonna get paid, that's it, that's it. Not one of us is getting paid a cent for doing this. On it, okay? That's all that's to it, and I'm here to help however I can, okay? That's, this is plain and simple. I want to try to create some form that can help the people of Port Mansfield, because they just told you right there, it's not their concern. On it, okay? Thanks.
Thank you, Gary. So you guys just heard Wyatt and what we're about, and we appreciate, like you said, all y'all coming today and listening to us and giving us a forum to, we want to hear what you have to say, because if we're gonna represent you, we want to hear what you have to say. So if anybody's prepared any questions, I'm gonna turn it over to Miller, and he's gonna moderate for us, and I've just got a few pieces of paper, but if that's all we got, that's all we got, but we'll open it up, and you're free to let us know what you think. So we'll just do these few questions here, and then we're gonna, we have a budget that we did prepare, because we do know that that's gonna be one of the things that we need in order to incorporate, so we would like to show you the budget. It's preliminary, and, you know, we can make some changes, adjust here and there, whatever, but we feel like it's a pretty good, sound, solid budget, but we're gonna let you ask these a few questions, Miller, and then we'll go to that, or you wanna do the budget first?
Do you wanna do the budget first? Or you wanna do the questions first?
I think it looks like Marcia's prepared to do the budget.
All right, who's speaking to that? You?
Marcia's gonna speak today.
Marcia's gonna speak today, okay.
The reason is...
Watch out, Gary.
I know there's been a lot of questions, revenue and new taxes, and a lot of the no's are no's, because they are fearful that their taxes will be increased. And I've spent a lot of time researching the current tax structure here in Willacy County, and I've identified three potential sources of revenue that would help us tremendously. I'd just like to go through them, and if you have questions about the financials, write them down and pass your note forward, and we can address them one at a time. Help me with that. So, introduce myself first. Marcia Visser, I was a corporate accountant for twenty-some years for a security company. We made emergency telephone systems for airports, hospitals, universities. It was an international company, and I ran all the books, I was the corporate controller, I had people reporting to me, and I had to do an annual budget for a twenty million dollar company, year after year. It was not the joy of my life, if you've ever done a budget, but anyway, I've spent a lot of time putting this together, and I'm okay. These are the assumptions that I used when I created this budget, and it's based on some projections based on history. We don't foresee that we will have any income right from the get-go. We will be running on a very minimal budget to start this, and we have money already, I believe, in donations that would help us, and if we need to, we can do some fundraisers to raise money to get this going, and we have no tax revenue month to month. So no revenue will be received until February due to the delay in sales tax implementation and transfer from Willacy County, the mixed beverage and hotel motel tax by the state comptroller. There are several businesses in town that sell mixed drinks. Every one of those mixed drinks is taxed at eighty-quarter percent, and that gets sent to the state comptroller, and they return that back to the community to help with police and whatever alcohol results have, okay? So we do have several buyers here that sell drinks. The hotel motel tax currently is at nine percent, and we will reduce that to seven percent. Well, I'm kidding.
We could.
We could, yeah. This budget is based on lowering it from nine to seven. Sales tax revenue is based on five percent of total Willacy County sales for historical quarter three of 2024, quarter four 2024, quarter one of 2025, and quarter two of 2025, at two percent sales tax. Mixed beverage tax revenue is based on rolling twelve months' actual sales in Port Mansfield only. The state comptroller has a very detailed report that shows who's selling what. Interesting. Hotel motel tax revenue is based on actual seven, eight, five, nine, eight reporting to the state. Like I said, we could potentially lower the rate to seven, from seven to nine, or we could share the two percent with Willacy County. We have options. Want you to look at the budget.
Right now, you know how much we get of that money? You know how much Port Mansfield gets? Zero. Zero, zero. What you get? You get nothing.
Does that count on all the rentals that they rent for all the fishermen coming in here and everything all over town?
The hotel motel tax? Probably, maybe so, just like through the cracks or whatever.
Whichever's reported.
I have a question. Right now, from the research that I've done, the county takes nine percent, the state gets six percent, the town is seventeen percent, you could technically add a two percent local tax.
Correct, we could add, or we could lower. I mean, we're based it on a lower indice, so that we wouldn't overexceed your expectation.
So where's the nine percent? Because that's county.
The nine percent the county gets...
Is they're still gonna get?
No, they will not get it, we can claim.
No, that goes away.
So you're gonna fight us?
There is no fight.
There's no fight, it's legal, they do not, they may fight us, they may throw that out there. They can't, they're not gonna be able to get that.
Legal, yeah.
That's municipality, that's municipal law, that's Texas state law, 351 and 352.
Who's gonna represent you equally?
I won't need, the judge signed off on the incorporation. Judge Guerra, Judge Keeter Guerra, signed off on us being able to incorporate. He should know the law, that's the law. Yes, he does.
You're just too good.
Doesn't matter, the law's gonna be on our side. 351 and 352, let us finish the question, okay?
Write your questions down and send them forward.
We got a few right here.
Okay. All right, assumptions about expenses, we do believe that eventually, maybe not even right away, you don't know, but a secretary to bookkeeper to keep track of things, so wages based on five hours a week at twenty dollars per hour, plus benefits are FICA and unemployment, and then out of the hotel motel tax, we could share with the Chamber of Commerce twenty percent of the revenue that we get from that tax. And we do have a question about how long it may take to fit the control of the hotel motel tax, so that could take a while, but if you look at the budget, we, well, and most of you know, that only can be spent on tourism-related things, so you can't put that in your general operating budget, it's just to promote tourism. All right. So, I know this is a little small, but I got projected the sales tax revenue for the first year of sixty-six thousand dollars, four hundred ninety-nine, and the mixed beverage tax revenue, ten thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five, total revenue seventy-seven thousand. You've got the bookkeeper, secretary, we've got benefits, we've got no office, we will not be needing an office, and when we do need somewhere to meet, there are grants available to build a town, a city hall. That Grand Hano, we went to visit last Saturday, and that's what funded their city halls, grants. But until then, we're just a little town, we don't need a whole lot. We've got some telephone in here, and we need a town phone that y'all can call, and that will be the answering machine. We'll figure that out, we need input from y'all. IT, office supplies, professional fees, like lawyers, tax experts, that kind of thing, zoning experts, meeting space rental, that is if we need to pay two hundred and fifty dollars a month to rent this building to meet with you all as mayor, yeah, and have a city meeting. And other is a membership to the Municipal League of Texas. So I've got forty-nine thousand dollars... So I've got $49,000 in income based on this spare bones budget. So even if the sales tax, my projections are high, we should be able to be fine for the first year. Here we get to the hotel motel tax revenue, $137,816. Right now, that is all going to Willacy County, and very little is coming back here. Very little. Let's see. So after we spend some money on a nice website to promote the town and some updates monthly, advertising, marketing, that share that I referred to, 20%, and come up with a total of 108 expenses, so profit, net income, $28,900. So my projection is a net income of $73,747.
Seventy-eight.
Seventy-eight, 747.
I am having cataract surgery very soon. My eyes are very bad. Okay. All right. Okay. So this is the detail. This is the month-by-month, where I'm showing you, sales tax revenue could come in of the three counties. You've got your month-by-month income, mixed beverage, sales tax, all expenses. And then this is the hotel motel tax detail, month-by-month, income, expense. And then I came up with this slide because of the question about how much sales tax revenue we could really get. So this was my formula that I used that you can throw a lot at. So anyway, that's all I've got for you. So thank you.
So one thing I'd like to add into there.
Questions?
Good. One thing I'd like to add into there is that, you know, like, most people or some people might know, we went to Grand Hino, and we spent the day with them at Grand Hino. And in 1997, they incorporated. And they are, and one of the reasons we went to Grand Hino was because they were about the same size as we are here. Yes, they don't have a navigation district, but they do have a border right there, about five feet from the street or the town. But we were, you know, we asked them a lot of questions, you know, what they did for everything from fire department emergency systems and how they did their budget and how they got money and how grants occurred and what kind of grants they were able to get. And it was very interesting talking to them, you know, about the process they went through. But one of the things that we found out from them is that their budget for the year for Grand Hino is $60,000. And they make it on $60,000 there. So this budget here is not something that is where you're gonna go, oh, well, there's no way, that's not enough money to make it on. Look, we're not trying to come in here and turn this into South Padre, like Alan said. You know, we've got main particular focus as we're looking through this process, and, you know, we've got to come in, we've got to go in and get a budget, and then we've got to look at zoning. And it's gonna take time, and we want the input of the people on it, on whatever's going on. And if y'all say, hey, we need to really work on water systems, then we can get people to work on grants for water systems. Some of these grant writers put their costs into that grant, where you don't even have to pay them. But it depends on the grant, and there's a lot of different kinds of grants. We know that. We spent days and hours looking into grants, looking into laws, looking into the different processes to do these things. And yes, we do have attorneys working with us, more than one attorney, working with us on things. And some of them are very quiet and in the background and saying, I don't want any publicity on this. I'm just doing this for the city in the background, and that is it. But it is feasible to run and get going on this amount of money. That's the main focus of this.
So we've had some questions here that have been submitted. You know, give us five, probably. And I guess we'll just let you guys take the turn and answer. Whoever wants to answer can do it. So if anybody else has questions, we invite you to come up here and, you know, ask the questions in the mic so everybody can hear it. It's a little bit hard to hear some of the folks in the back, but we'll start with this. So the first question says, do we know if the municipality will have legal right to zone harbor land, to zone harbor land used to stop the container barge project? Holly, I'll let you take the first shot.
All right. Well, the Texas legal code that gives me now municipality's the right to zone is section 211012. So we can zone the property, whether or not we can zone the harbor?
Yeah.
That's, no, that's not, that's under the water code. But we can zone property so many feet off the water. So that's under the Texas legal code that municipalities have for zoning. So you know that you don't necessarily own property in other areas that you may have homes. The municipality zones those properties, right? Whether it's residential, commercial, mixed residential, or whatever. I mean, you don't really zone it anyway, correct? But the entity of a municipality has the right to zone the property, and they could zone the property off the water. And that's one of the first things that we're gonna do when we form a municipality is to zone these properties so that they just can't put up, you know, container port barges or whatever, you know, type of other industries or, you know, what's a good one? They were putting up over, trying to put up a Grand, you know, like a, it was a...
Storage barns.
No, it was like a...
It was a plant.
It was a junk plant or something, something like that?
Yeah, it's like a process plant.
Recycling plant. Stuff like that. We don't want that kind of dirty industry in Port Mansfield. We don't want dumps, you know? I think it was a big dump, right? That they wanted to put in there, and they had to get, you know, some legal help to stop them from putting in a dump area and things like that. So yes, we can zone the property. Texas statute under municipality code gives us the right to zone the property. The navigation district right now zones it one way, and then the next day, they come in and they zone it for something else. They say it's commercial, and then they go, oh, this guy wants to build a house.
It was based off of one person making the same...
And it's based off of Ron Mills making that...
And whether or not you get to him.
But municipalities can zone property.
Yeah. Good. Yep. Okay. The next question is, Gary, can you go over the steps after incorporation? And then another question on the same person I'm saying is, why is the budget plus one million, which I think that's already been answered, so?
Steps of the after incorporation.
Yeah. So I actually, I guess accidentally kind of answered that. But the initial things that we've got to focus on is, number one, is creating that budget, getting everything down to the judge, getting certified, and the budget, budget does go to the judge, okay? We've got to take it down to them, but we've got thirty to ninety days, I believe, to turn that budget in.
Have to post the papers on it.
And you've got to post the papers on it. We will then, after that, we're actually gonna go straight to that and working into zoning. And that's gonna be the first couple of steps. And that could take quite a bit of time on that. Now, after that, we're gonna look into, start looking into grants and ways to start working on the water system, the sewage, the streets, and the drainage on it. Now, probably some other things and questions that are gonna come into there on that is, you know, the biggest, probably the reason a lot of this came about realistically is because of barges coming into the port on it and a container, a container center and bringing barges in from, I guess, Campico's where they say. And I think everybody knows this, but if you don't, here it is. It's gonna get built, okay? It's gonna get built. There's not, there's no, if it doesn't get built, we gotta pay tax stop back eight-point-something million dollars. And there isn't eight-point-something million dollars there to just take a tax stop for not building it. So now, the other question is, are barges gonna come in there and they're gonna actually do the work? This is where things get real tricky, because we've got one facet saying that it's not gonna happen. There's a number of people who are like, no way it can happen, it ain't gonna happen, there's no way barges are gonna come in there and do it. And then we've got a lot, most of, the navigation district, which realistically is the only people that have a say whether it's gonna be done or not, is saying it is gonna happen. Now, there, you know, I mean, I was directed through Facebook to go over to talk to Eric, and Eric will let me know what's gonna happen on there, okay? But I guess we saw a couple of marketing pieces that came out a couple of days ago, right? Did everybody see those? About the port, about the barges, about industry coming to Port Mansfield. I mean, that's there, all right? Ron Mills says it's gonna happen. Trevino says it's gonna happen. And we've talked to Reyes, she's throwing a fit saying it's gonna happen, okay? So I don't know. I have no idea if it's gonna happen or not on it, okay? I don't know if you want it to happen. I don't know if you don't want it to happen, but I have no idea.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna go for that. That project is going ahead full steam and it's almost complete.
Can you come up to the front?
Can you come up here so we can hear you? Well, he's saying the project is going ahead full steam, and it's gonna happen.
They fired the company, and it's gonna run it, but they're still building it, and all the contracts are proceeding on schedule, and then they're gonna hire somebody else to run it, but they're building it right now.
Okay. And they're building it. Yes, they're out there building it. They have to build it. They can't, they're, it's eight-point-something million dollars, we've gotta pay the tax, back the tax stop. Just the point is, are they actually gonna use it for that? That's the question. And some people say yes, some people say no. I have no idea.
The board, the board, the guys that's in the service, Mr. Kennedy, and all the other board members are saying we want jobs.
Yes.
And it's proceeding, and they're building the seawall around the concrete slab and all the, all the other stuff. It looks like it's going forward.
Might, it might be. I don't know. It looks, it looks like it is, and a lot of the board is saying it is. And I know there's a big plan out there that was put out, the anonymous plan, which is now, I guess, the anonymous Kennedy plan, according to Stacy Reyes on it. If it works, awesome, it worked. But the reality of it is, there's eight hundred ifs, ands, and buts to that. And, you know, if frogs had wings, it wouldn't bump its butt when it jumped either on there. So, you know, do we know that any of that's gonna happen? That's, any of that plan, is it going to come to fruition? Again, nobody knows. But at least if there's a municipality, we have a path to try to work things out for the people of Port Mansfield. Here was one question.
Is there a $2 million note attached to that out there that they got to pay for?
If we're gonna go up the paper, they will get up, and you can ask, or you can talk to them about it.
He's asking about that $2 million loan where our homes could be up for collateral.
That's right, it could be.
And if we don't, and if we don't change to a municipality, then that's gonna assume over two to three hundred homes here, right?
It could.
About two million, about three hundred, I think.
It could. It could. I said, I can say positively that it will, but there is a possibility, there's gotta be collateral if you don't pay it off.
Somebody think that up. That's a wrong statement, somebody think that up. Nobody's telling them to put up collateral.
They put land up for collateral. Why not? They put land up for collateral.
Not your home. Not your home.
Go ahead. Yeah, yeah.
First community bank is holding on it. Any property that is collateralized for the loan is the area out there that has nothing on it.
Five hundred acres.
So they're holding the loan. Your home is not collateral.
Not now. Not now. The only, the, the, in, in, you know, this is the only the stuff that we can get out of the navigation district, okay? As far as those notes, what they owe, and so on, okay? So my understanding for right now, as far as notes, is they had to borrow the million and a half until, yeah, they had to borrow a million and a half.
Because of NASD.
Because of NASD. They had to pay it back. They gotta pay back the million and a half. And they said right there in the meeting that the interest on it was, I think it's forty-seven thousand for the interest on it. And they said the only other, the other, but they get it back, okay? Navigation district will get it back, okay? Because it's a reimbursement type of program on it. So they pay it out, they get it back. Right? But until they get it back, until they figure out how to do an invoice and get it back, then they get it back. The other part that's sitting there at the very end of it is supposed to be a million dollars, that they've gotta sell land or something and pay that million.
The state secretary, man, explained at that meeting, those traps were there, he heard, he said that any and all cost overruns are on you.
Right.
Anything change orders are on you, talking to the navigation district. So we don't know what this is gonna cost yet. They are, they have a problem right now with the new seawall about being able to pour the cap on it. Is that a change order? Is that a cost overrun? We don't know.
It's the navigation district.
Okay. The next set of questions here, I think probably, these might ask what some of you are willing to, if not, we'll get to you in a minute. But anyway, here's the first question. Where will, where will funding come from without raising taxes? So I think, Marcia, you addressed that with the budget, okay? Number two, who will control the waterway? Alan?
Navigation District.
Navigation District. Number three, who will we automatically get a deed to our land?
No.
No. Number four, how does a municipality give us a seat at the table? That's a good question.
Well, the table is the state legislature.
We're gonna seat at the Texas State Legislature. We're not gonna have a seat at the Willacy County Navigation District unless, when we propose and impose the zoning, unless they fight us on that or whatever they're gonna do. But we're gonna have a seat with the Texas State Legislature because municipalities have standing. People have standing. We have standing as citizens of this port to be able to rule and govern ourselves. And the navigation district should control the waterways, the navigable waterways, and not impose itself on us. Right now, they treat us like a municipality when it's convenient for them to treat us like a municipality. They obviously have our PUD, they have our land leases, they, you know, provide us police, you know, policing. But, you know, they treat us like a municipality when it's convenient. When it's not convenient, they wanna treat us like they don't even know who we are, and they treat us like we don't even exist. So right now, we would have standing.
I would just want to say one other thing on that about the navigation district, and I think Alan mentioned this too, is that the three of us up here don't want the navigation district to work, okay? We would hope that we could work and coexist with the navigation district on it. We are not trying to get rid of anybody in the navigation district at all on it. And take care of the waterways. They're yours. Care for them. Get, take, extend that jetty out there. That's great. Do whatever you do, but we just wanna say so for the things that we've done within the town. I mean, you heard right there, Eric Kennedy argued for it, and they said, uh-uh, no, ain't happening.
Okay. Next question. Is there any truth to the statement that if a municipality wins, that the WCND will stop providing the services they currently provide, such as blazing cells?
So what happens the day after the election, should we vote the municipality in? Nothing. Nothing changes. Dave, look, we gotta get established. That whole budget you see is just about setting up operations. You think we can do that in a day? A week? A month? A month? No. It's gonna take us a while. It's gonna be a deliberate process of do it right. So you want us to take our time, make sure we dot the i's, cross the t's, and did it set up right? Should we get into a discussion about perhaps the Navigation District offsetting some services that they currently provide because of their debt situation, and it would create a win-win situation for both organizations? That's what I really would like to try to work on. Now, whether or not I can get there or not, I don't know, but I'm willing to try. And I've talked to Mr. Kennedy, and he seems like that he understands that the municipality is coming. Whether it comes this time or next time or what, most people will recognize that the municipality is coming to this town eventually, like it or not. It's coming. So, that, I think that answers the question. If it's not, it's, so nothing's changing, they're gonna stay, it shouldn't be a time that we win-win, and we can help the Navigation District offset some debt, and then we can get up and get started because we're eager to get involved and get some things done, then that creates a situation where we might could do that. Otherwise, if the Navigation District tells us, "No, we don't need you for nothing," then they continue to run it until it's not able to run anymore, I would assume. And then maybe perhaps we introduce an alternate plan. So, I think that's pretty close.
Thank you, Alan. Okay, this is, this is probably the closest. Well, if we become a municipality, and we become a municipality, how much of the hotel tax will go back to the chamber? The chamber uses those funds to operate along with the fishing tournament related?
It was in the budget, twenty percent.
Ask them, answer them.
Twenty percent, twenty-five?
Twenty percent of what we do in hotels.
Twenty percent of the toll goes back into the chamber.
This is our first pass. I mean, could be more, could be less.
Yeah.
But it definitely would come to us. Someone else.
And so I think this is more of a comment than anything else. The last question and comment says, "To the candidates with the note signs in their yard, how do we know you'll support the municipality?" I don't guess we can answer that.
I think they said they would yesterday, they had a meeting, I think they said.
Anybody wanna address that?
Someone's gotta stand up.
Ralph?
I still want to ask you back to the original question you asked. I don't like your answer to that.
I did.
So, uh, your, the question is, if we become a city, the Navigation District, what are they gonna do, right? That's kind of the question. Their services. You need a mic? You can all hear me.
I can't hear you.
No, you need a mic.
I can't hear you.
You need a mic.
If everybody can hear me, the question is, if we become a city, what's Navigation District gonna do the next day?
Nothing.
They're gonna continue to do what they do now.
So Ron knows this is gonna keep on mowing the grass and picking up the trash?
Yeah.
Yeah. It gets our tax dollars to do that.
We pay for that.
We pay for that.
Did Ron say that?
It doesn't, but you're paying for it. You pay for it.
Legally, legally, he's bound to do that.
By law.
Orally, illegally bound.
Are you, do you think something else is gonna happen? Do you have?
Because we're Fort Mansfield, and they're gonna retaliate because we don't deserve to be a regular.
I think that would be a really good thing for the municipality if he did, but, but he's not gonna do that. They're not gonna do that. Mr. Kennedy said they're not gonna do that, so we're gonna deal with it.
So we'll see who picks up the trash when this happens.
Is that a threat?
That is a revenue, that generates revenue for them. Why would they stop?
They're not gonna stop. They're not, they're not gonna stop.
We cannot hear the question.
Yeah. Are there any other questions from the field? Why don't you come up there and ask it so everybody can hear the question? No?
The water bill.
Any other questions from the field? Yes, sir. Okay.
I gotta tell you, Shinto Valley became Shinto in Texas. The next day, City Hall was a two-car ride. Does that sound familiar? It's a low, slow process. It takes forty-four years for them to finally have a City Hall, jail, and municipal court. Okay, so it takes a while. It's nothing happened overnight. And our budget at that time was ten thousand dollars for two thousand people. Okay, so don't get, eh, don't get too nervous about this. And my question has to do with property tax. I pay property tax to an appraisal district, which refers to this place as the city of Fort Mansfield, Texas. Did you know that?
Yep.
Yeah. It's on your appraisal statement, if you look at it, and they so much for a hundred dollars valuation, give to the Navigation District. Really? I paid the lease money. What do they, what are they doing that for? There's a whole host of things having to do with tax law that I think we're overlooking. And property tax is one of them. I'm not trying not to pay property tax to them. Incidentally, we have a warranty deed fully signed and on file with Willacy County. You better not try not to roll through our house just 'cause it's convenient.
Okay, anybody else? Here we go.
One other thing.
Yes, sir.
It's all yours.
As a Corps of Engineer officer, I gotta tell you, Field Manual five, that's three eighty-four, says that drainage in a topographically flat country is impossible.
Yes, ma'am.
My question is, uh, with the zoning, is that gonna affect any of the tax rates for any of the, the way you zone it?
So, uh, your question was about zoning, and is that gonna affect any, any of the tax rates for the way it's currently zoned? So, anybody that has an existing property or existing properties that are currently zoned to commercial, residential, uh, or combined use, those zones are gonna stay the same. We're not gonna rezone all that. I mean, that's for you, that's the way it's been zoned, that's the way you've been using your property, so no, it's not gonna get rezoned for that. We are gonna, we are gonna control the growth through zoning on any future properties that they try to implement or enforce upon us. As far as industrialization, our main goal, our main key is to stop the industrialization and to slow the growth because we do not have the infrastructure to support even the growth that we currently have. So why are they trying to industrialize us and add all this additional, you know, uh, properties and, and these big facilities that we currently don't have the infrastructure to support even what we have here in the community when all of our residents show up or all the houses are leased, you know? So that, that's our, that's our, that's our goal, is to control it, not to not have it, but to control it so that it, uh, goes incrementally with what our infrastructure has, what we can support as a town.
Pam's got a question. I'll just elaborate.
Could you elaborate, or do you even know yet what the process to zone would be? I mean, is that going to be between the three elected officials, or is that gonna be opened up for the rest of the town to make decisions on?
Do you want you to come to the mic?
Can you not? Here?
I can answer that question.
Then we get a bye on the mic.
There you go.
I would like to know, following up on your question with the zoning, is we know yet what the process would be to zone something? Would that be between the elected officials? Uh, would that be open for referendum? Would that be open for the vote? I just wanna know what the process is. If you don't know yet, that's all right.
So what we plan to do is set up committees to work on that. So we've had some volunteers that have offered to come in with their expertise, and it's gonna be through our local committees, and we're gonna set up the committees to do that. And Mr. Dogg, you wanna speak a little bit to that?
I can. As a registered architect for the last forty-five years, I can answer that. You have to have a building code to define what is a house, what's a residence, what's a commercial, what's industrial, what's religious, what's even my scenario, and so forth. There are twelve occupancy categories in the International Building Code. That is what you stem off of to develop a zoning article. You say, "This piece of dirt, this is gonna be residential." What do you mean residential? Residential one, single family. Residential two, quiet draw. You already know where it's located. So you've got all starts of zoning hinging off of the International Building Code and the International Residential Code. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So we have to adopt...
We have some, uh...
Yeah, and, and then get this.
Standards.
The Willacy County Code Enforcement Officer didn't even know the International Building Code.
Which could help us decide why and all that.
But he, and he is the code enforcer as to what, so I asked him just this last week, "What code are you enforcing?" He didn't know. I said, "How in the world can you enforce something you don't know?" Robert's a nice guy, don't get me wrong. I like that guy. But he had a little problem there. I told him, you know, 104.2 says that sidewalks and driveways do not have to have a building permit. He didn't know that. I said, "Yeah, there's a whole chapter right there, 104."
But we're gonna start slow. We're gonna start slow, we're gonna get some help, we're gonna get some committees, and we're gonna use our, our people and our influence, and currently, everybody that's currently zoned to a certain standard. I mean, we're not gonna come in and reinvent and venture, you know, reinvent the wheel and, you know, start condemning places or anything like that. That's not gonna happen.
On, on the zoning thing, I wanna add just a little bit. It'll be published.
Yes.
In writing, to where you can get to a copy and find out what you can build or what you can't build and where and how. And it's not hinging on an authority with a one individual that you may or may not get to see, and he may approve something for Jack and then tell George that he can't do the same damn thing. So just tell him, we're gonna try to put something writing and have a standard. This is basic, this is basic stuff here. It's not, it's not rocket science.
And the first people we're gonna, the, the... The first people we're gonna send the letter to is gonna be the Willacy County Navigation District. So they're gonna get a letter. Everybody's gonna get a letter that, once we become a municipality, that we're gonna zone the properties accordingly. So they're gonna be the first ones to get the letter, so.
Early voting. When is this, sorry?
Tomorrow.
Oh, I'm sorry. You wanna come up here so we can hear you?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can hear you.
When?
That's the new chamber president.
Yes, this is our new chamber president. All right. Pick us up, president.
My, my question is, um, Holly said that, um, she's gonna send the letter to the Navigation District. Will that letter get to the Navigation District?
I'll deliver it personally.
So my question is, will we have a voice when it comes to our mail? If, uh, the municipality passes, will we be able to speak up for us, or is, are we still...
Oh, to the post office?
Yes.
That's bad. So, yes, as a municipality, you'll have more standing as...
That's, yes, that's what we're hoping that we all are.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Brother King, you got something else?
Yeah.
And you're full of some of that. You have questions?
I'm gonna answer it.
I'm gonna add any.
We're gonna hold that key.
U.S. Postal Service Standard Four C is not, let's put it this way, the one in Raymondville doesn't conform to Standard Four C. This little building over here, it doesn't conform to Standard Four C.
We're in incorporated areas.
The postmaster in Raymondville has a boss. You have to go to that guy and his boss to get Four C compliance down here in Fort Mansfield. Now, once you have Standard Four C in your postal facility, you have so many parcel boxes and so many customer boxes. The customer boxes are this wide. Not this wide. This wide. Okay, see, that's the first thing, is how those are, and they're open from the front, not the rear. And that takes up less floor space. Twenty percent of the number of customer boxes actually parcel boxes, and they have to be used.
Okay. So, yes, we'll have voices at the post office.
Early voting. Holly, when is this, sorry?
Tomorrow.
Sorry, tomorrow. Everybody get out there and vote. Uh, any, any closing questions before we wrap this up? I'll call it.
For our poll watchers that signed up and took the passenger.
We got another question. We're calling it.
When and where can we vote?
The Raymondville Library. That's where early voting is.
Early voting is at the Raymondville...
Library.
Library.
Raymondville.
So what about on Election Day?
Here.